Okay, good evening. I'm Janet Anderson. I call to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 7:32 PM. So for everyone who hasn't been here before, the exit is the way you came in. These exits to my left are for emergencies only. In order to comply with the open meetings law, we must meet in person. We do not have the capability to have the public attend by Zoom, nor can we stream our meeting to YouTube. However, we will post an audio recording of this meeting to the Town website. Materials considered at this meeting are available in the agenda packet that is posted to the Town website. And members of their public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissboro new york.gov. Okay, Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements are fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are other members of the Planning Board, Paul Fusco, John Guzmano, Charlene and Delicato. Bruce Thompson is not here, however, we do have a quorum and thus we can conduct the business of the Board and vote on matters that come before us. We also have our consultant Jan Johansson from KSCJ, Council Judd Seibert. I already mentioned the Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad, the Building Inspector Kevin Kelly, and the CAC Chair John Wolf. So with that, the first item on our agenda is a decision. This is calendar number 02-24 PB for your nail and spa on 890 Route 35, Cross River, New York, an application for change of use from indoor recreation to personal services. Hello.
My name is Chi Yuan-Fat. So last meeting, we were told that we had to get approval from the Health Department, and we submitted the change of use and the sewer treatment system inspection form on June 2nd, and they told us that they were a science engineering team. And if there's anything that they need, they will mention comments via email. I reached back and followed up with them on June 14th. So far, so good, but we haven't received anything as of yet.
Okay. So this change of use did come before us last month, as you indicated, and we had confirmation from Jan that the parking requirements are the same. The Board did agree to waive a public hearing and ask for a resolution, and the Westchester County Department, sorry, Department of Health approval was made a condition of the resolution, as I think Jan will, if you want to go through the resolution quickly for the group.
Sure. As I mentioned, this is a change of use from a former indoor physical training studio known as Body Fit to a nail salon, which is a service-type use. As you mentioned, the parking requirement for both the former use and the proposed use are exactly the same, so there's no parking modifications or issues there. The project requires no land disturbance, qualifies for a waiver of site development plan procedures under zoning code. A referral has been made to Westchester County Planning, notification only referral. The Planning Board waived the public hearing. They had mentioned the necessity for a change of use permit from Westchester County Department of Health, as made a condition. It's a type 2 action under SECRIP. The resolution's pretty pro forma. The only other condition I would mention is that we really don't have a site plan and a proper floor plan, so those would be required as a condition. And that's what you'd ultimately sign as the approval document. So the two main conditions here are the Health Department and the submission of a site plan and a floor plan. The site plan is, you can give me a ring, there is a site plan of record for the property that could potentially be used, and then we really need a proper floor plan of how you're going to help pick your space, square footages and layout and that sort of thing. I'm sure that was part of your Health Department submission. You would want to see something prepared by an architect or a professional engineer. Sounds good. Go.
So you've got that as, you're clear about what, and if you have questions, you can contact Jan about what is really needed.
Okay, so by next meeting, hopefully we'll hear back from the Health Department.
You won't need to come back to us if we do this right? So I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution as been described?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
And seconded, so moved by John, seconded by Charlene. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Sorry, could you tell me what that exactly means?
Okay.
So you'll, at the time that you have the Health Department approval, we'll submit that to Kirsten along with the floor plan and the site plan, which you have to go over with your own phone, was required. We'll submit those documents to Kirsten, and then the Planning Board Chair and the Secretary will, or Administrator, will sign the plans, and at that point, you can get a building permit.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
So everything else from now on will just be kind of administrative through Kirsten's office.
Right, so, yeah, talking to Kirsten and Jan are the magic people, and you don't have to come back here. Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is an extension of time request. This is for calendar number 06-22 PB, calendar number 05-22 WP, and calendar number 03-22 SW. This is the Waukeah Buck Country Club snack bar, 18 Perch Bay Road in Waukeah Buck, New York. A request for an extension of time. Hi.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Board. Dawn McKenzie, landscape architect from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture, here representing Waukeah Buck Country Club and their beach club project. Joining me in the audience today is Peter Hall from the club. So we were here in the fall and asked for an extension at that time, and we got a six month time extension, and we're back again. They are about ready to start construction, have a contractor on board. We just need a little bit more time to get the site plan signed and meet the last couple of conditions of approval. The reason it took us so long is, took us a while, as we discussed in the fall, to get our approval from the Health Department, which we have. And we also went through some value engineering and developed construction drawings, and as part of that process, you know, before we put it out to bid, there were some changes that were made to the plan, which we've already reviewed with Mr. Johansson, and he has gone through them with the Planning Board Chair, and been asked to just give you a little rundown of what those things were. And it sounds like a long list, but it really wasn't anything significant. And just to preface it from the beginning, we ended up with a reduction in impervious surfaces within the wetland buffer, just so you know. Prefacing with that from the beginning. Okay. So I'll just run through the list, and if anybody has any questions, you can let me know. So they have upgraded the electrical service to three-phase. It's going to run overhead to a new onsite pole, then underground to the utility area where the generator is, and the Board had previously seen that, and we just added a little gravel area in that spot because there's going to be, in addition to the generator, a transformer and switchgear in that spot. They have added a 1,000 gallon propane tank. Previously, the club had worked with a couple of smaller tanks for the snack bar, and this is going to be above ground, and it's going to be, so where the handicap parking is, it'll be up above the wall, it'll be screened from both sides, and that's going to provide propane for the outdoor cooking area and for the snack bar. Let's see. For the patio around the snack bar, we actually changed that from pavers to bluestone. Bluestone is more in character with the materials that are already at the club, and it just made more sense. And the pavers were not pervious pavers. We could not provide pervious pavers in that area due to the testing just didn't work out in the conditions, so just to switch to bluestone, change in materials, that's it. Also, as part of this, this piece might be jumping a little bit ahead, but we've changed the limits of deck versus patio. There's actually more deck in some of the areas where it was previously patio, so that's a change of that area from impervious to pervious. And the reason that that happened was there is a basement room underneath the snack bar that is where the fire pump is going to go, and there's a connecting tunnel leading to that, and it made more sense, since they're excavating, to put that underneath the snack bar, to put decking over top of the access tunnel. And that's one of the reasons for that change. We've refined the stone fire pit area, just tweaked the way the, you know, the fire, the grills work, and they added an outdoor pizza oven, which I think was a great idea. I'm sure the club members will as well. And something came up, so at the recommendation of the Building Inspector, he said, you know, you really got to check out the existing deck while you're out there, since you're going to be moving forward with this project, and it was determined that the existing deck needed to be upgraded and replaced, so they're replacing the existing deck. Let's see. They added a walk-in cooler behind the snack bar. There was already pavement in that area, so it's no increase in impervious, it's just a walk-in cooler between the snack bar and the retaining wall and the parking area. And there's still circulation around it, and the drainage is all good. Let's see, we already talked about the basement fire pump room under the snack bar and the tunnel. Also, we are proposing a handicap accessible chair lift down to the beach, and we just refined that and added a landing area at the bottom, which will be bluestone for storage of the lift when it's not in use, and a, you know, more defined landing area for getting on and off the lift. Let's see. Oh, the fireplace was eliminated at the back of the pavilion, and so that is now a retaining wall, and as part of that, it included updated grating behind the pavilion with the addition of a tree well to preserve an existing tree to remain up slope of that area. Let's see. In front of the pavilion, down by the waterfront, there's a couple of overhead doors because underneath the pavilion is used for storage. That was always in the plan, and we just added a little gravel area along the front of that, as opposed to having it be grass or something along the lines of that. Let's see. Also, at the front of the boathouse and the front of the, it's just the front of the boathouse and the front of the pavilion, they added some, we added some overhead, added some lights on the front of the boathouse above the overhead doors of the lakefront. They are fully shielded, LEDs similar to fixtures we're reusing elsewhere on the site. It'll just, you know, provide them some down lighting in there for safety reason when it gets dark out if they're putting things in and out of the storage space, but they are fully shielded, no light going out towards the lake. Let's see. The other thing is there are some beach lights that were mounted underneath the existing deck that's shown onto the beachfront, I guess they play volleyball there and do other things, and they were actually, they're adjustable floodlights, we're replacing them with some shielded LEDs, which will give them better ground lighting without, you know, any, that's fully shielded and doesn't aim out towards the lake and can't be adjusted to aim out towards the lake. Let's see. So with the replacement of the existing deck, they're replacing the existing railing lights associated with that deck. They're all inside the railing, they're fully shielded, you know, from the outside, and they like, they're low on the posts, so just, you know, lighting the deck surface, and it'll be similar to the lighting level that is there in the existing condition. Couple of other things we did, a little bit more utility-related. The fire protection tanks have been updated, and we provided details on the plan previously. The plan had showed a big concrete 40,000 gallon tank, and now there's two, underground, two fiberglass underground tanks that are 20,000 gallons with a wall in between, and that's been designed by the fire engineer. And so that's been updated. Our plan is still in the same location in that parking lot underground. So let's see. Then there were other things. We made adjustments to the locations of the sewer force main piping from the boathouse and added locations for underground communication and electric between the buildings. One of the reasons we tweaked the force main is to try and preserve trees and get further away from the trees. That was just a minor adjustments for that and to coordinate with the MEP and what was going on in the building as they refined the designs for the building. We also added footing drain locations and provided updates to the roof drainage piping, just, you know, things that were already, well, we added the footing drains and the roof draining, just refined that, all consistent with the SWIP. And then, let's see, we updated the stormwater management design due to the Westchester County Department of Health comments. These, we talked to you about last while when we were in, requesting our extension. And for that, we had eliminated, as a reminder, the surface stormwater basin to be replaced with a jellyfish filter unit. Also, we added more silt fence and a second construction entrance behind the pavilion. So it actually comes down from the far end of the parking lot to the back of where the pavilion's going to go. You know, we brought the contractor on board, and he was concerned, you know, about getting access in there to install the cisterns on the far side of the pavilion. So we added that to the plan. It will be removed and restored to generally pre-conditions. It's not a permanent access, it's just temporary during construction. And then we added paving details and other details to the plan, and that's it.
Thank you. So as Dawn said, that these were a lot of changes, but in Jan's view, they were minor, and then he did review them with me, and I agreed that these are minor, but because they're here, I figured, let's take the opportunity so that when, when, you know, if we see the final, final thing, you might say, wait, that, you know, there was a fireplace, so there wasn't going to be a cooler. So it's all, so it's there. I thank you for going through that. I think the real comment tonight is that we want to have is a, we can have a six-month extension of time. So I'd look for a motion for that.
I still move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion about that? All in favor? Aye. So it will be extended to November 16th, 2024? And does anybody have any questions about that? All the myriad of changes, they are all...
I have one, and you've probably answered it last time you were here. The lighting, especially the added lighting, is that on all night long, or is it on only certain hours?
No, it won't be on during the week. It'll be on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and off by now.
Okay, great.
There's notes for that effect on the plan.
Okay. I kind of figured it was covered, but, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now start some public hearings. So the first of our, first item is the calendar number 06, sorry, 6-01 PB, T-Mobile wireless communications at Leon Levy Preserve. And this is New York State Route 35 and 123, an application for a special use approval renewal for T-Mobile facility at an existing cell tower. So this was before us in March, and I think we were waiting on some updated documents. So before we get started, let me just do a little bit about a public hearing. I don't know if anyone's here for that, but the purpose of the public hearing is for the Board, for all of us to hear from the public about your concerns or comments. The comments should be addressed to the Planning Board, not to the applicant. Public hearing is not intended to be a dialogue. Our role really is to listen to the concerns, to make sure we understand them and put them into context as we review the application. So we will, we will listen and we will put that, put any comments we hear into consideration as we review the application. So with that...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Pocia, and I'm an associate at the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder. Our office represents T-Mobile Northeast LLC in connection with this telecommunications facility, which is co-located on the existing tower located at the Leon Levy Preserve on Roots 35 and 123. As you're aware, T-Mobile is simply seeking to renew its existing special use permit for the facility. No changes to the facility are being proposed at this time, and the documentation that we have submitted in support of the renewal application demonstrates that the facility continues to operate in compliance with applicable laws. And referring to the Chair's comment, we did submit an updated structural analysis as build plans and an updated RF compliance report. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this application and pending any discussion from the public. We're just respectfully requesting that you close the hearing this evening and direct that a resolution be prepared for the next meeting.
Okay. Is there any member of the public here on this, on this matter? Did anybody sign up?
No one signed up. I have not received any written comments on this matter.
Okay. Do any members of the Board have any comments on this? So I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Paul?
I'll second it.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I think, Jan, you did confirm that the, you have all the materials that...
Those were the three items we were waiting for. I received the review.
Okay. So we would ask you to prepare a resolution for July? And I think, I think you reminded me about this, that what we've done is, in the past is, is kind of gone now, so that the tower is the renewable special use permit, and the applicants all will now get, I mean, the co-locators?
Carriers, yeah.
Carriers, thank you. Will all get, they won't have to come back for more special use. Okay. And that'll be part of the resolution. Okay?
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, again, a public hearing for calendar number 04-19PB, calendar number 17-19WP, and calendar number 06-19SW. This is for Pound Ridge Stone at 2 West Road in South Salem, New York. This is a reapproval, which has been resubmitted for a special use permit for the site improvements, including additional parking and storage. So in, this was before us in May. Basically, the special use permit had expired while they've got a site development plan underway to try to get that constructed. So they've resubmitted it. We did schedule the public hearing for tonight, and we asked for a resolution. So the first question is, is there anyone here to, that wants to speak on this matter? Did you get any comments?
I received no written comments on this matter.
Okay. Do you want to run through the highlights of the resolution?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
Why don't we identify? Mr. Mormons here.
Oh, sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
And I'm sure you have a lot to say in support.
Well, I'm happy with everybody.
Yep.
It'll be okay tonight, and we'll move on.
All we need. Great. And then, if you want, discuss this with Jan while the public hearing is open or closed.
Oh, okay. I guess we can, we should close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
I still move.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so now, Jan, I'm sorry. Thank you, Judd, for keeping me on the right track.
Sure. The resolution is a duplicate of the prior resolution in terms of the wherethas is. Part of the resolution is identical. We reaffirm the neck deck, obviously. The Board said the special use permit is being reapproved. The site development plans have already been signed, so we're not requiring a new set of plans because they're valid, they're signed plans. The wetland permit and the stormwater permit have already been issued. The last meeting, we talked about trying to coordinate the various expiration dates to all these different permits, which this resolution does, and it ties into the expiration date of the site development plan. So site development plan expiration date is the date that you're going to use for all the approvals.
Is there any way to get that extended at this time for, like, since we, you know, lost a lot of time because of, like, a little glitching? Is that something that could be...
Your, your, the site plan was designed on March 6th, 2023.
Yeah, so it would expire March 6th, 2025.
So it's not giving you...
Yeah, but all you have to do is pull a building permit, and then you get another two years.
Right.
So I don't know that you need to extend it.
I know, it just seemed like I'm just fighting time over which way I go.
Okay. The last time we were here, you talked about that. We even, I think the Board allowed you to commence work under the site development plan, so I think you're...
I don't think anything has been done.
Well, because you haven't started the work, but they allowed you to start the work because the site development plan is still valid. At the last meeting, you said...
Yeah, but I need a permit to get started, I think.
Well, that, you have to apply to building...
Yeah, no, I got that, but what happened was this expired, and then it kind of killed the permit.
No, at the last meeting, we said that the fact that the special use permit had expired would not prevent you from starting to work under your site development plan, stormwater permit, and wetland permit. We talked about that at the last meeting at your request.
Okay, I thought everything was kind of...
Yeah, because we just wanted to make sure that the special use continued, and it was more important that it was in place prior to your additions of your CO. Now everything is tied up in one expiration date, which is your site plan. As soon as you pull a building permit, which it sounds like you're ready to do...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm kind of, that's what stopped everything from getting going.
Right, you're going to get two, you're going to get two years in order to complete it.
All right, but, yeah, so once I start the permit, then I get two years?
I think it's the issue to the...
Because I thought the money I had to come up with for the bond had, like, one year time to get anything done at that time, and it is like, that's been sitting here for, like, you know, seven, eight months now. That was like a...
Yeah, once you get the building permit, you have two years to install all the improvements.
Right, okay. So it starts the clock again, so, once I get the permit?
Yeah, it starts the clock again, once you start the...
Okay, because I was like, it just...
So you have to pull a building permit by March 6th, 2025.
Okay, well, so hopefully we can get started.
Yeah, you want to do it before that.
Okay, so...
Oh, good, so I'm good to go then?
We just have to...
So nothing to start it until I get the permit, though, right? That's...
You have to, you have to...
They have to vote on the resolution.
Vote on the resolution, but then you're going to talk after that, well, get that done tonight, and then you talk to Kevin about getting a building permit.
Can't start work until you have a building permit.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution as described by Jan.
I'm motion to approve.
Paul moves. Charlene seconds. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So you look puzzled. You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine. So now I got to talk to Kevin about it, or is that bothering everyone a week?
But not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, the...
Not tomorrow. Okay. So I would suggest a full pair on Friday? Okay. Set up the time if you need to meet. So we're clear with the permit, so the only guy to do is sign off on the permit? Is that how it works?
You have the permit, and then we will...
And then we can get work going.
Provided we have our sureties and our working liabilities all in order, you know, nothing's expired, maybe we can issue a permit.
Okay, good. All right, great. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is calendar number 06-23PB. This is Double H Farms and the Reed subdivision at 20 Boutonville Road South in Cross River, New York, application for subdivision and private riding academy. So this was first in front of us in March. We did have a site visit. We've reviewed this to the Pound Ridge. It's been reviewed in front of our, in front of our Board on both April and May, and we put a public hearing on tonight on the first phase, so...
Correct. Good evening. Joe Martovano on behalf of Double H Farms LLC. With me tonight is Dawn McKenzie, shortly, from Insight Engineering. Shortly, Casey Harrison and Quentin Judd should also be here. I think within a few minutes, they flew up for the meeting. Also with me is Dan Hollis. He represents Mr. Reed. And tonight is the public hearing, as you mentioned. I thought we would start by going through the plan briefly for those who... I thought we would start by going through the plan briefly for those who, and I know you're very familiar with the plans, I know you're very familiar with all the information we've provided regarding the use, but I think it's worthwhile going through it quickly, at least in case there are members of the public that haven't heard the information before.
Okay. So what I'm going to say is, if, are there, is anyone signed up from the...
I have one so far. Does anyone want to sign up to speak on this matter?
All right, so maybe what you could do is...
Turn that.
Is turn that a little bit more so that the members of the public can see it. We don't have the, we don't have the easiest place where people can see things. But if there are members here, we might as well allow them to understand what the proposal is.
Perfect.
Is that okay?
Yep.
That's perfect.
If you can't see it?
No, we can see it.
Your affiliate plans, right?
Right, we can.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay. So just, just as an overview here, as you pointed out, that we are on the agenda because we're looking for approval for the first phase of operations. This is, as Dawn's going, if I let her talk of us, as she, this is a pre-existing horse farm, 20-stall barn, et cetera. She'll go through the existing improvements and she'll go through the proposed improvements, which in Phase One are very, very minimal. Okay? This property, the entirety of the property, including the portion of it that's located in Pound Ridge, is in the Westchester County Agricultural District. Both the Phase One and the, what do you call it, the subdivision, their type-two actions has been confirmed by the town attorney. So I'll let Dawn take you through that, and then we'll talk about the actual features of the proposed riding academy.
Dawn McKenzie, landscape architect, inside engineering, surveying landscape architecture. So just to help people get oriented with the site, I'll just give you a little bit of geography. So here is Fountainville Road. This is Route 121, runs along here, okay? And there's a lot of green on here, because there's a lot of green out there, but this is the limits of the existing property, right?
Correct.
Okay. So just to give you an overview of the existing conditions of the site, so this is our, this is our proposed plan. Let me see, I have to put the existing conditions plan up, that might be helpful. But in the existing conditions, there is an existing barn, there's an existing paved access to the site. There are two driveway entrances off of Fountainville Road that lead up to the existing barn. And there's a bunch of existing paddocks. It is, it's been historically being used as an equestrian facility. That's something new, what is, like, prior to that, it had other agricultural uses, but that's the most recent history. There's an existing building up here, it's like a farm building, and there's an existing sandring in this location that you can just faintly see in the background here. And existing wetland on this side of the property, and there's an existing wetland in here in between the two driveway entrances. This area here is currently an open field, and that's where most of the Phase One improvements are going to go. So, so let's talk about the Phase One improvements. We're really not doing anything significantly, significantly different from what's out there already. The existing barn and the driveway circulation system is going to remain, including the existing entrances off of Fountainville Road. The existing barn is going to remain. This grassy field, what we're doing with that is we're going to install in this location a grand, a grand prix field, which is what they use for their operation, and a sandring or an outdoor riding ring in this location with a small viewing platform. That's the main part of the, of what they're, of what we're proposing today. In addition to that, oh, and just to give you an idea, this dash outline right here is the limits of the Phase One work. It's all located right here. So, a couple of things we're doing associated with that. There is a drainage issue with the existing driveway here, we're going to address that. I have more details of that if you're interested. That's this plan right here, so I'm just going to pop that up. So this is the existing driveway that we were just looking at in the larger context. There is a drainage issue with it, and what we're going to do is provide a swale on the, on the downhill side of the driveway and a drainage collection system, which will tie into the existing drain inlet in Fountainville Road. And that will deal with the drainage issue that's existing along the existing driveway. As part of the regrating for the new grand prix field and the sandring, we're going to provide some underdrains and surface drainage associated with the, with the sandring. And runoff from that is going to be collected into the drainage system and is going to go into two underground tanks to be used to irrigate the fields. Both of these fields will need to have sprinkler system and be irrigated. And all the runoff from this is going to go there. As far as the grand prix field, which will be predominantly grass with some hedges and other features to define the edges, as well as the jumps.
And you'll remember from our site walk that you had some concern about drainage at that point. That's all going to be resolved with this in the Phase One.
Thank you.
Right. And so drains from that area, we're going to, there's a series of curtain drains, underdrains, and any underground, any groundwater runoff is going to be directed to different points along the existing wetlands, so we're not interrupting the hydrology of the wetland with the improvements that we're proposing. Simply speaking, that's what we're doing, regrading these and putting in some drainage.
Did you remind the subdivision itself?
So I didn't talk about the subdivision. So the other component of this, thank you, Charlie, for reminding me. Another important piece of this, and let me find my board again. Okay. So the neighbors, the Reeds, who own this property over here, 5.1 acres on Route 121, what's going to happen is these two pieces right here, which are currently part of Double H Farms' property, are going to be severed at this, these two lines here, and they're being conveyed to the Reeds. So they'll go to 12 acres from their 5.1.
And as part of the conditions, as you mentioned, as you realized from our prior submission, is that those are parcels, they're going to be merged. Lot lines are going to be erased, so they become part of the Reed parcel, but it's one parcel merged. We're not creating any new lots, we're not creating any new septics. That's not part of this application at all.
Okay.
Shelby, continue.
What?
Does anyone have any questions about site work first, before I go on and talk about the actual operations, because they're very important?
Uh, question. First of all...
Could you say your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name's Jean Aiken. I have a question about, you mentioned the parcels. Now, those are partly in Pound Ridge, aren't they?
Are you saying which parcels?
The parcels that you, that you indicated are going to be integrated into the center part.
No, they're Lewisburg.
They're all in Lewisburg.
They're in Lewisburg.
Okay. And the parcels above that, what are those individual little parcels? I don't quite understand their signature.
So these right here, so, so we also represent on here a potential future Phase Two, and those would be revised horse paddocks. There's a bunch of existing paddocks.
Horse paddocks.
They're not parcels at all.
That's it, they're not parcels.
Okay.
Correct. So heavy, heavy lines like this, and I can point any of them out to you that you want, this represents the property line right here, and it runs all around here like this. That is the existing one. These are dashed because this piece right here and this piece here are going to get merged to that parcel.
Right.
And this will be the new property line for the Double H Farms' property.
The second question I have is access. You have here, it looks like, two accesses of Fountainville Road.
Yes.
Right, okay.
They're existing, that's the story.
They're existing exits, right. No, I, I, I was just concerned because I know right now there's construction going on in Fountainville Road, and it gets rather congested trying to get up onto it. Is there another access road that goes toward Pound Ridge? I understood there was, but I guess that was just a rumor.
There's, there's, there's no access.
There's no access.
Right. Someone else owns this land.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Just so you know, that house on the corner is a single-family resident that's adding a fanner room at the back, and they're probably 80% completed this way.
Okay, so you asked about questions, but you still wanted to talk, so I'm kind of not sure whether...
You know, however, however the board wants to do it, I think it's important for the public to know the operation that's going to go there. They know that presently, there is a 20-stall barn, and there's all these outcomes, all of which are remaining in Phase One.
Okay.
But the operation is very important. So, you know, who is Double H Farms? What do they do? What are we looking to do on this during Phase One? So Double H Farms is, has that history of developing very high-end, very beautiful equestrian facilities. I did give to the board some pictures of the facility they have, it had in Richfield, and one they have down in Wellington, Florida. I did make some additional copies, if any member of the public would like to see them. But this is what Double H does. They are specialists at developing these. It's a family history. The Harrisons did it, and now, of course, their daughter and Quentin, they're continuing that legacy, and it's been a long-term legacy. But what are they doing on the site? And this is really important. So as opposed to just having a riding academy, people coming there, riding the horse, that's not what they're doing there. They're going to establish a very high-end, very targeted training facility for horses. And Quentin Judge is the head trainer. And they do it for the, the show circuit, and I'm not just talking about the national, I'm talking about international, overseas, et cetera. And so they train horses primarily, as I pointed out to you before, their own horses. If there's going to be a 20-stall barn during Phase One, 12 to 15 of the horses could be owned by Double H, because they care for the horses, they board the horses, they breed the horses, although breeding's not done onsite, as we pointed out before. And they are training other persons' horses for them. The people who board the horses there, they don't really come there, they don't really ride the horses, they may come to take a look maybe once a month or something of that nature, but primarily, they entrust their animals to Double H to perform these training exercises. And then the horses go on the competitive show circuit. And when I say they go, certainly a horse could be unable to perform, and that horse would not go. But primarily, this facility is only going to be used approximately 58% of the time because the horses are going to be on the show circuit. So 42% of the time, this facility will virtually have very, very minimal operations. And when we talk about minimal operations, we talk about minimal traffic, we talk about everything being minimized because those horses are there to be trained, and then they, I, I don't, so they leave. They do, and they go on the circuit. Even now, when we brought their own horses up, which we're permitted to, even now, I think they came up recently, and I think they've been gone for three weeks. So in terms of the actual activity, okay, during the training season, there will be activity there, of course, but if you compare it to a full-time riding academy, you're not going to see the traffic, you're not going to see people going there. It's going to be a very high-end facility for a very specific purpose, and they have very, very limiting factors about the impact it's going to be on the neighborhood, because the horses will not be there most of the time. So that, I shouldn't say most of the time, about 42% of the time. So, and then you look at, and then you have less traffic for your suppliers, less hay being delivered, less oil being delivered, less everything being delivered. And eventually, in Phase Two, which we'll talk about sometime in the future, they look to replace buildings and build facilities like, show you they can build. But for now, it's imperative for them to be able to get their, the horses, not just their horses, but the horses, the customers, onsite in Phase One. We have very, very limited improvements. We're not taking down any buildings, we're not building any buildings. We kept it minimal because we really need to get it in there because they'd like to get training, not just their horses, but the other horses.
Great.
And so I think that, I should add.
Sure. I mean, all I'd say is...
Introduce yourself again.
Myself and my wife, and the owners of Double H Farms. All I would say that is, I think Charlie was going to make the strong point about the minimal use of the, of the farm, how little we're going to be there. To be honest and fair to you, I think you could say, better to talk about the maximum use we could have, and even that itself, just not think we're minimizing anything. When we're all there with 20 horses, this is a horse farm, 20 stalls currently, that's what we like to have. We have less people on staff than if you had a normal boarding facility with different owners, different horses, because it's one operation. So even at the maximum use, and we are there, 20 horses, everything, it's one operation, it's our kind of business. Our two employees work for us, the road, the traffic, everything, I'm happy to give any explanation on that. He's right. We came up here, I think, the last weekend. Our horses have been, since they were there in May, and since they're here in May, there's been no horses on the farm for over three weeks, and today, three came. So that's our normal when we're, you know. Even when they're fully, that's a better thing to talk about, have given declarative traffic and use.
Absolutely.
So...
Thank you. Okay. Can I open it to the members of the public now, or did you have something more to say?
I'm going to say I have nothing more to say right now.
Perfect. Okay. Are there, has, have people signed up?
Jean, three, done. Jean? Are you finished with your questions?
Yeah, I think that was really my question, was the access.
Thank you.
Jean Manning?
Come on up.
Come on up.
Oh, I'm coming up to the podium. Great. Put me on the spot.
Right, right. And introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Jean Manning. I am a neighboring to the farm. I must say, the farm is, I'm an advocate of the farm. I think you're going to do a beautiful job, and I'm thrilled they're going to be our neighbors, or they are our neighbors. I have one issue that I'd like to bring up myself, and that is the subdividing of the Just to shed a little light, I had sold the property to the prior owner, Lee Vogelstein, who was not here tonight, but loaded me up, dropped me off a package with a million things. When I sold her the farm, it was owned by the Taylors, Scott and Elaine Taylor, I think it was, who is the daughter of Barrow Pencils that owned the Linden Farm and Birdstone at the time. It was all just their one big farm of 166 acres. And when, as the Mrs. Barrow got older, she wanted to sell Linden, so then she gave Elaine and Scott the farm. When I sold them the farm, Scott specifically told me that it would stay intact as a farm. They had minis, mini ponies, they had little farm animals like that, but it was to stay intact. I mean, Lee has from here, from 1940, showing things, she's got a package of everything. The question I have is, in the survey here, they talk about the subdivision needing to go through both towns if they were even going to try, and I'm a little surprised that it's getting done. You know, I have no problem with that farm going forward and then putting in, doing the work on the rings, doing what they want. But I must say, because I was specifically told, and because it is in the cer, and I have it right here, of which Lee Vogelstein had spent hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in TOPOs and everything on that property. J.D. Barrett and John Arons did it originally, Kellard and Sessions, there's, I mean, I have it all here, if anybody would like to look at it. And so when Paul said the other day, when I was at the first meeting, and he said, you know, I don't, that property, everybody remembers as always being one property since the beginning of time almost now, and all of a sudden, we have a subdivision that I understand, you know, Mr. Reed is worried about, I don't know what, because it was always to be used always to be used, that one leg. As for the fire department, in case they needed to do, they needed an egress to one twenty more. Maybe you can answer this, Charlie, for me.
I can answer that. We did check, surveys, past things. I think Hurstin came up with some documents we looked at as well. There's no provision, and the town of Pound Ridge would have no jurisdiction of property wholly within town of Lewisboro.
I understand, but it still says that you need to go before both towns if you're going to be playing with that lot.
I, I mean, I would have to look at it. I think we've already looked at that, but I don't believe that there's any provision against that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say, it should be directed to us, and then, and then, so, we hear this, I think it's in, it's a question we hadn't heard before, and so it's helpful to have that. I don't know, Jan, whether you have seen any of that on any prior plans, or...
Any, some sort of restriction on subdivision?
Well, a requirement that it also go to Pound Ridge.
Well, we are sending it to Pound Ridge.
We've sent it to Pound Ridge, yeah. Yeah, I think Pound Ridge has even commented about this.
They do.
I don't think, did, on the subdivision?
Pound Ridge has to sign the subdivision.
They have to sign the subdivision.
They have to sign it off.
Right.
We've had similar situations, not with Pound Ridge, but with North Salem.
With North Salem, right.
Both. They would withdraw us, and we would...
We will get the sign off.
Yeah, so they are required to sign off.
And will they have, will they plan, will they send for a planning board meeting in Pound Ridge?
I don't know what they'll do. They have to sign the plan. But again, it's...
Yeah, we're not, we're not sure what they have to do, but we did, go ahead.
I saw the letter from Pound Ridge, and it stated, we don't have an agricultural district.
Right.
But towns don't have agricultural districts, as far as I know. It's Westchester County.
It's county.
Yeah, so there, it is an agricultural district.
It is. I have that. I only got the letter, and I'm sorry to jump around the subject. I only got the letter at three fifty PM, but I think you only got it around three forty-eight. I'm totally prepared to answer that. The, I don't know that the town of Pound Ridge has agricultural district. I do know that the entirety of this property, I bought the Board of Legislators legislation, I bought the maps, entirety of this property is located in Westchester County Agricultural District.
Yeah, so therefore, like what they said, well, this is an R three, the terms of the agricultural district really...
Well, on top of that, again, I'll just, I'll jump to this, because you got the letter from Jim Perry. I tried to call him, unfortunately, I missed him, he's not going to be in tomorrow. In addition to the fact that we're in the agricultural district, in the R three A, they also allow farms, and farms are defined as raising livestock.
That's good to know.
Yeah, and...
I was just very surprised and...
Yeah, so I mean, I'll speak to him afterwards, but I can completely respond to the letters from Pound Ridge.
Okay.
And as you said, Pound Ridge will sign off on this.
We will ask Pound Ridge to sign off on it, yeah, right.
They'll review, and they'll have their chance.
Right, they'll do whatever they do. Okay. Did you have any more comments on that?
No, I just didn't know if anybody wanted to look at this. I mean, Mrs. Vogelstein was the one that, as I said, this is all her information, and she is adamant that it can't be split, that she has gone, and they had looked into this, and she said, they can't split it. So my question to you, Charlie...
That's a start right there. It's no restrictive covenant in the title.
I'm not finding, I'm just saying.
It seems like you are, okay.
My question to you, good friend.
I know, longtime founder, yes. Go ahead.
My question to you is that when they went into this, what happens if they...
I'm sorry.
All right, all right. So, this sounds like a discussion.
Conversation outside.
When Rogers went into this contractual obligation, and the Reeds, it must have been, with the knowledge that there was a possibility it wouldn't have happened, what happens to that land if it is not granted a subdivision? Is my question, because obviously, it's the contractual person, LLC, who owns that land more or less. What happens to it?
I'm not sure. Where is your question in a planning context that I'm supposed to answer you?
We do have some, I mean, I think the board does have some questions about this as well.
Well, and Mr. Hollis is also here, he'll help in answering, but I don't think this is germane to the subdivision, that's probably just what it's trying to do.
Well, we want to hear the, from the public, so let's, let the public have, talk, and then, so, but, but I don't think it's appropriate to have, you know, you talking directly to the lawyer in front of us. You can go do that, you know, elsewhere.
No one else has signed up?
No one else, is there anyone else from the public who wants to speak?
I think Mr. Hollis wants to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. My name is Pete Daniel Hollis. I'm a partner in the law firm of Gettinger, Waldinger, Monteleone, Cachou, and Hollison, 118 North Bedford Road, Mount Kisco, New York. And we represent Kevin and Felicia Reed, who are not parties to this application per se, but they would be the beneficiaries of it, were the subdivision to be granted. I think that I would be safe to say that the Reed's property at forty-five Cross River Road, if not the most iconic building in the town of Lewisboro, is in the top five. It's an extraordinary piece of property. Their sole purpose here is they're going to spend an incredible amount of money to obtain two lots, six point nine acres in total, to buffer the already existing property. To answer the other lady's question, you know, contractually, if the subdivision's not granted, there's no transaction. It's that simple. That's just that simple. The reason for the buffering is simple, and I think that, at the end of the meeting, or during the meeting last month in May, Mr. Reed, in a moment of enthusiasm, and he felt a little bit on the spot, made a reference to speaking about a conservation easement, not recognizing, having done a full study of it, what the consequences of that would be for him, were he to apply for tax relief attendant to a conservation easement. And the answer is, not very good news for him. Also, a planning board, a town board, zoning board cannot impose upon a party that they must go get an easement for someone else. You couldn't say to the Charlie's client, in order to have this barn approved, the riding academy approved, you have to go across the road and have the person across the road give you an easement. They just can't do that. That's just not permissible. In the same way, conservation easement, you can't get credit for coverage. So if Mr. and Mrs. Reed are successful in obtaining this property after the subdivision, those two lots are merged, as Charlie said, those two lots are not standalone lots. Mr. and Mrs. Reed are not spending this kind of money to put up a modular house on one of those, or both of those lots. They're buying those two lots at full price in order to buffer their existing property from the horse farm, as nice a project as that might be, and as low traffic as that might be compared to other horse farms in the community. I think that the, Mr. Reed, upon further reflection, has indicated that, you know, he's not interested in a conservation easement at this point in time, for the reasons I stated, but he's certainly more than open to looking into it when, as and if, he acquires the property at his future time, if the conditions attendant to the conservation easement allow him to get a significant benefit, which at the moment, they would not. So I really just wanted to clear that point up, and make the point that this is a merger, as Charlie has said, and that they're not going to be three lots, there'll be one lot, total eighteen acres, thereabouts, plus or minus.
So I have a question about that, if, if, because I do believe it was the, so, so first of all, I was under the impression that Reed is a co-applicant in the subdivision.
You are, you are a co-applicant.
Okay, so, so since they are a co-applicant, I think it's, and since they offered the conservation easement, I don't really understand where you say, now there's not a benefit, or not adequate benefit, but there might be in the future. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. The, first of all, the, a requirement that a conservation easement be granted as a condition of approval is not appropriate. When Mr. Reed and Mrs. Reed evaluated the consequences of a conservation easement going on the property now, and what that would do to them for their ability to add anything to their existing property, they decided that that was something they weren't interested in. I believe if a close hearing or listening to the tape is undertaken, you will hear that there was a reservation. It's not crystal clear, the whole thing is a little muddled, what was going on, people were throwing phrases around.
We were here, yeah.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
We were here, yes.
I wasn't.
Okay.
That's why, trying to make my record, that's all.
Okay.
And there was a lack of clarity as to what the terms and conditions of the conservation easement might be, and there was also sort of a reservation of rights towards the end too, which was also, could be interpreted any number of ways. So, all of that being said, cooler heads having prevailed, in the cool, cool light of a morning, a decision was made that that wasn't the best that could be done. But he's open to doing it at another time.
Okay, so my belief, perhaps, perhaps not, not fully knowledgeable, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but is that you could propose, you know, that, that a conservation easement means different things to different people. And so you could propose exactly what that was. So one of the things, for example, you say these are, these lots are going to be merged.
Correct.
Is there anything that, would, would the applicant be, or be willing to say, put something on that says, and they're not going to be divided in the future? How do I know that?
Well, I think what the law says, not what the applicant says, once there's a merger of the lots into the one larger lot...
Right.
That there can't be any further subdivision without coming back to you.
Exactly, but, but...
That's the law.
But if somebody comes back to us with a reasonable, you know, a proposal, we would have, you know, just like you say, you know, and I don't know that we could say, no, you told us you were merging them, but you didn't make a guarantee, you didn't say, we don't intend to subdivide, re-subdivide in the future. So, I mean, that's one thing I would be interested in. That's not a conservation easement, but that's a assertion about, and it's a limitation on, on future.
It's a relinquishment of a property right.
Correct, correct.
Where the client...
Correct, I mean, that's, that, but, but you're telling us it's going to be merged, as if it, this is forever and ever. And it isn't. It's until tomorrow, when you, when you put a new application.
I think that's the conclusion, you're not really, I don't think it's spirit made.
All right, so what, one of the things that, that I think, I think we were worried about, is that, I mean, Paul brought this up before, is, and, and if I'm misstating, please correct me, was that, you know, this is largely a grassy area. It is, there is very little buffering woods, except in these parcels that are being, and, and in the Pound Ridge parcel, but in, in these parcels that are being proposed to be given to Mr. Reed.
Well, that given, it's being sold.
I'm sorry, sold, but it, you know, conveyed to, to Mr. Reed. So, so one of Paul's interests was, well, could we make sure that these stay as forested, as treed, as, as, into the future? And that's when we heard, oh, yes, that would be, that they would be open to a conservation easement. So you could, I mean, conservation easements, again, mean, you could come in and tell us, we will only take down X, or we will only put this up, or we will, you know, these are the limits on the, on what we intend to do. What we don't want, if this were to be, to happen, is to have someone come in, again, you know, next month, and say, okay, now I have eighteen acres, where I'm in four-acre zoning, I want to put four houses up, I want to do, I'm going to take all the trees down, you know...
Good luck to them, trying to get that through the board.
Well, that...
Wouldn't have to come back to the board, my dad.
Pardon me?
It wouldn't have to come back to the planning board.
For a four-lot subdivision?
No, for the clearing of that property.
Oh, for the clearing.
Yeah, they wanted to clear it, they wanted...
Yeah, that's different.
So, so...
Just to the point.
To the point.
Just to the point. If that property was to stay with the farm, and they wanted to clear them as woods, they're not a single-family home, they would have to come back to the planning board. Once it gets conveyed to single-family residential use, that ability is, is, is gone.
Look, that, there's a tree ordinance, for one, they can't go randomly cutting trees down.
Well, the tree ordinance is, is not...
It's there. I think, I think, I think it is not, it's a subdivision, right? It's a subdivision for the purpose of merging these lots to be kept as buffer, to be kept as they are now.
But there's nothing that says...
There's nothing to guarantee what's going to happen in twenty years, or ten years. But that's not your, that's not your purview to review, as you're looking at this now, as to what my client, or some successor or interest might do. You have to look at this subdivision based upon the facts before you. Is there a legitimate environmental or legal reason not to grant it? Yes or no? And I think what we're doing here is, Mr. and Mrs. Reed will pay six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a lot that they'll have no control over. They're buying it to buffer it from the horse farm. It's that simple. They're merging it for the purpose of buffer. They're doing, without a commitment permanently on paper as a conservation easement, or any other sort of restriction, to protect their property from anything by having a greater buffer of unimproved land. I just don't get...
The code does, Dan, the code does allow for oversized lots, in a subdivision with an oversized lot, the planning board to understand the future development potential of that property.
With the future development, there's not going to be any.
Well, you don't know that. I mean, you're saying that.
It doesn't, there's nothing...
You don't know that the farm, in ten years, these people may sell the farm, and somebody wants to come in and put a Toll Brothers development in there. So how come you're not taking the same position with that? Or, you know, it's just, it seems to me...
Because they would have to come back.
It's a little targeted, and, and a little bit, because I'm really a little, at a loss as to what's going on here. It's, what is going on here is that the Reeds are seeking to buy two pieces of vacant land, merge it with their existing property, which I might add, is beautiful, and they are terrific stewards of that property, and they're hardly going to put a roller rink on any of those properties, right? Let's be serious. I'm being facetious, but I'm dead serious. What you're saying, what you're saying is you want him to pay top dollar, buy it, and turn it into some sort of a park. That's just not right. It's just not right.
Thank you. Is there, there is someone from the, member of the public that...
Again, Mr. Hollis, but how do we know that?
I'm not, I'm not going to do that.
Sorry, we can't, we can't have discussions between, you can ask us a question?
I'm just wondering what happens if that happens. I think the neighborhood's nervous that it could become subdivided down the road and have little houses there.
Okay, so, so wait, so I hear that concern, I hear that concern.
And that's where you took them, though. That's where you took them. Because that could happen if, if these folks don't own the farm, and it's hard times for the farm.
Right.
Farmers sell off lots all the time.
Exactly.
To help them get through the next...
And they would, they would come back to, to us.
Exactly, exactly.
But that's why we're here now, is because the farm is selling off lots to a property to be subdivided.
For buffer.
So, the best way to buffer a property is create a conservation easement, and then we know no development is ever taking place.
It's your point of view.
Exactly.
That's your new point of view.
That's the planning board, or my point of view on the planning.
Well, that, that's a point of view that I don't think...
Right, so, so...
Can I say something as well? We took care in the contract, we took care to make certain the property would be merged. And the reason we did that is that if they had any subdivision plans in the future, they would come back to your board. That's what we did. And if you review the minutes, as we've been appearing before your board, I've always said, that if they want to do something, because we made them, it's part of this contract, merge these lots, if they want to do anything, now, I shouldn't say do anything, they want to put up a doghouse, they can do that. But what I'm saying is...
They can put up, and we now have a rule that says you could put up an accessory home, right? On the second, you could put a second home on...
But if they were really, if they were really looking to game the system, they would have take, kept the current lot in their names, lot X in the ABC...
Well, I don't know what they're doing. I'm sorry, okay.
Excuse me.
Sure.
They would have kept the lot they own in their own names.
Right.
Lot X in the name of the ABC LLC, and lot Y in the XYZ LLC, and game the system that way. Because there's no merger then, those are standalone lots, that they could just sell off. That's not what they're doing. They're accepting the, they're waiving the right to do that. They could do that if it were approved, and they're merging them. And any future development of that lot as a whole has to come back to this board. And if this two-lot subdivision is this hard, good luck to somebody with a four-lot subdivision on the same property.
Right, got it. So I'm going to, maybe ask, I, I know that we have some urgency on getting a...
Right, riding academy.
Trying to get the, the grading done for, for the purposes of this. Is it necessary that the subdivision be part of Phase One?
My own thought? No, it's not. We, we would like to get that approval, which is limited to the property that we've shown you as part of it. It's very important for us to get that part done. So if further discussions need to happen about the subdivision, that could be separated, that's fine with us, because we really need to get on the property if we've been consistent. And I think you, all of you have previously said, that that is something that you'd like to see move forward. I think even our neighbors would like to, so I'd like to do that.
And what I would do...
And what would you think? And what would you think? Yes.
Well, I don't want to stand in the way of Mr. Martin Vado's clients, because I recognize, I represent horse farms too and other jurisdictions. I understand what they do, and they do it very well. And what I would do, if I knew that this board would direct Jan to grant a resolution, to draft a resolution for the next meeting, I would take up with my client the point that we put a conservation easement on the smaller of the two lots, just to show you, just to show you that the doubt you have, and my client's belief in conservation of these lots, is ill-founded.
Okay, and please, yeah, okay, go ahead.
If this board would give me a sense of the meeting resolution, that they would direct such a resolution, then I would take that up with the client, and I think that I could convince him to do it.
So, my concern is not so much with your client. Things happen over time. People, you know, sell property, things happen, and I appreciate this, and I would have some, you know, I think the board ought to discuss that. I was going to ask one thing, I heard, I think-
But that's not a commitment to do it.
I know. It's a discussion. I know. We have to, we have to give you an answer, but before we do that-
I've lived here for 64 years in this community, Bedford, Pound Ridge. There are a lot of properties I've seen different than they were when I was a 16-year-old kid, caddying, right? And some of it's been good, some of it not so good. But what I'm having a hard time understanding is, on this particular subdivision, which is going to be added on to property by a family that are great stewards of the history and the beauty of that property, that there's a concern about what's going to happen to that property in 20 years, right? I think there's a little, a bit of a disconnect there for me, especially with the track record that my clients have.
I hear you. Okay, so let me just ask a question. We did hear also about SHPO.
Yes.
Asking for, could you, does that, does a SHPO and the need to do a Phase One only apply to the kind of grading piece, or does a SHPO also apply to subdivision? I have no sense of what.
Well, I think that the application before SHPO is the entire parcel, and what they're saying, and I haven't seen the letter, but from what I understand, speaking with the engineers, that SHPO, they coordinated with SHPO, which is a requirement, they have to do that as part of their SWIP. You cannot get a SWIP approval unless you have sign-off from SHPO. They made the submissions to SHPO, SHPO just responded in that it's requiring a Phase One A archaeological survey, which that is a, basically like a research project. It may include a site visit, but it's generally research on the property in the form of a report. That report may say nothing further is required, it may say that Phase One B is required. Type B would be boots on the ground, doing actual underground investigations of artifacts set. We won't know until SHPO reviews the Phase One A and makes a determination whether additional information is required or not in the form of a One B. But I would suspect that it's, it's certainly for the land, any sort of land disturbance, anything associated with the SWIP. The lot line change is a type-two action, so is the Phase One. So, you're not really doing it for secret purposes, you're doing it for the SWIP purposes because it's a required one.
And that's actually the point that I wanted to make, is that we are type-two action, but in connection with the SWIP, that's a required thing. So, obviously, you could say, which I think might be an appropriate condition, you don't disturb until that's done, and that's perfectly fine, because it would still enable us to get our forces on the site, providing we don't disturb the site. So, that would still work for our purposes.
Okay, and I see a little bit of puzzlement out there. So, SHPO is the State Historical Preservation-
Office.
Office, okay. And that, so they, they required, an applicant is required to go to the SHPO to make sure that if there are historical artifacts on the site, they're carefully managed and not disturbed, so, so-
They did make a determination whether the project's going to have an impact on any sort of coastal resources on the property.
They just said they need to, yeah, they said they need to look at it. But it sounds like since that's only for a SWIP, that wouldn't affect the subdivision, if I'm understanding it correctly.
I don't think it would affect the subdivision.
Okay. Yes.
Charlie, you mentioned that was a DOT study as to the road?
No, I don't think that's what we said. Dawn, I know, could speak to that. We talked about the looking for site distance, checking that-
Right, right.
Distance from wetlands, whatnot, and that's been submitted to the board.
Yes, I saw that, but that's internal. I thought you said the Department of Transportation had something.
No, no, I didn't say that, no.
Now, where's the staging area? Where would the staging area-
Staging area four.
For Phase One B, where you don't need any staging area?
I'm not sure.
You're going to level off things?
When, when-
And where is the equipment going to be had?
Oh.
Where's-
Dawn, I'm not sure, do you know whether, do you have a plan for where the equipment's going to be?
So, they'll be using the equipment to grade off the area.
That's it?
Yeah. They'll be, you know, we have a pretty-
And where will they keep the equipment?
It'll be outside the wetland buffer.
We moved massive, the parking lot we parked in front of the barns all over the place, and our equipment's in front of the barns.
And also by the maintenance building, there's an area-
No, the point is, it's going to be near the road.
Oh.
Is it going to be near the road?
Yeah.
No, we have, we have up in front of the barns, the whole, part of the barns, all-
I think we're on the site visit. You remember, we were up at the lot and the barn, remember that? The parking lot adjacent to the barn, there's plenty of property there, and we will do that.
I think from the plans, it's not showing like soil stockpile areas, that kind of what your construction access or anything like that, unless, I don't, from ours, I don't know if you're on-
The equipment down the soil.
There's a construction access-
Okay, yeah.
-road, and there's soil stoppiling, and there's a limited disturbance line, so they couldn't, they certainly couldn't-
Also, we have erosion controls ahead, you should supply construction entrances where all the silvers-
Yeah, is that where you're, yeah, so they have that, okay.
They have, yeah.
So, they have all that noted.
Okay.
It's okay.
And there's another member of the public, come on up and give us your name, and-
My name is Heidi McKay, I'm Pound Ridge resident. I live on 121, and my property backs up to that property, and I haven't heard anything about any of this from Pound Ridge. So, I'm going to hear something from Pound Ridge. I know my neighbors and I heard a lot of commotion back there, but we never got any notice of anything.
So, we notified Pound Ridge, I don't-
We notified Pound Ridge, and the applicant has sent notices as required under our code.
But we haven't, my neighbors and I have not received anything, because I've talked to all my neighbors in Pound Ridge, and we have received nothing.
Could that be because we're not proposing any improvements in Pound Ridge right now?
Well-
500 feet from the property.
I know, but according to that land server, well, I'll talk to you, according to that land server, they also have a copy of Pound Ridge and Lewisboro both have to approve the subdivision.
Right, and we should have, I think-
There is a distance-
Gone to people within a certain distance of the property. So, it's possible that you are, that the distance from the property, you know, this is pretty big, doesn't reach you. I don't know about-
But there's my neighbor, Joe Arneo, who is next to the Reeds.
Next to the Reeds, yeah.
Yes, and he does not know anything about it, and so I informed him, he couldn't be here tonight, but he's very interested in this, of course.
All right. So, is there a, when you are interested, are you, is there something you would like the board to know?
Well, I would, I think that my neighbors and I would like, those of us who abut that property and live on 121 would like to know what's happening.
Okay.
Me and Pound Ridge.
Yeah.
And what's happening with the subdivision.
Right. Okay, I understand that. I guess I could ask-
She's checking the mailing list.
Yeah, checking for the-
We did sort of all the required notices as far as them were, correct?
Well, that's fine, we just didn't, so, maybe my neighbors, so, something happened.
That's what I'm trying to-
Maybe that you forgot, the notice from the quote says something happened.
Well, it sounds to me like by that land grant, or that land server-
I'm sorry.
-know something. It sounds to me like I should know something, and I don't, and so, I just would like to know. And I'll go to Town Board, and I've got my two neighbors, both attorneys, so, we'll find out what's going on.
Right. And I think they're checking the list now, so, but-
A few neighbors in Pound Ridge were notified, and in this particular application, it's a 500-foot notice from a subject property, so, I don't know where you live, and if you fall within 100 feet.
121, no, I don't think so, but I'm two houses down from the Reeds.
So, you answered that question. That's why you didn't get mailings.
Okay, but neither did Arneos, and so, they're next to the Reeds.
I don't know if they operate under an LLC, there's some LLC names here?
No, because he didn't know anything about it.
So, let's think about how we might want to go forward from here. I think, oh, I'm sorry, did you have something more?
No, that was it.
Okay, we, we should check on that.
Thank you.
So-
Can we move, how do we move forward so they can continue?
I'm kind of like, should we-
And push the subdivision to the next conversation.
Could we push the subdivision to-
You had a question before, you were on my counter, you're good.
Yeah, no, I do, I, if I, if, for us, I think we, I spoke to the last meeting, our needs are to have Phase One-
Right.
We all understand that.
Right.
We all understand, the subdivision is a big hot topic around here for multiple different reasons. I understand. I can make sure, who's, you know, maybe wasn't here last time, it was for us, this subdivision, everything was part of it, it's for, we understand the conditions of our person in the farm. So, no one here from our side, I understand, farmers sell and things like that, we're trying to sell, so we need to make some cash, this is part of us, so we have to buy the farm. So, but my only question is, if this could be separated, whatever it is-
This is what we're talking about right now.
For us to get-
Yes, it's over time, it works out, yes.
One thing I, point, you know, as I know, is another point could be, one that is mandated is how this was supposed to be all on the farm, but then to the point, that was sold off, and when the local scene, we didn't buy the property from, so I'm not going to show that a whole bunch of water in her concern, she sold off her farm herself. So, those things were subdivided or sold off. My question to you is, when that was sold off by me, this local scene, was that required to be in conservation? And why is this subdivision, if you're going to keep it all in Phase One and subdivision, if you separate it, great. If you're not-
Right.
Why is this different than that, and that, were that the same organization or not?
Well, so, it's, I think, up to the applicants to say whether or not you would be willing to separate it. I think we would-
Speaking on behalf of the applicants, we are willing to do that, correct?
Okay, so, because I think the, my sense from mutterings on the board here is that it would be, I think we would be, we still have questions about the subdivision, and if any kind of potential conservation easement might be possible, or future limits on that might be possible, but I'm going to say limits, because, again, we're all, conservation easement might mean different things to different people. But I think, what do we have to do to split, split this now, if it was brought in? Can we just-
What I would do, I would keep the public hearing open.
Right.
And then direct Jan to draft a resolution for the next meeting specifically dealing with the-
Phase One.
Phase One improvement component. Don't close the public hearing on either. Let's get to the next meeting, let's see if we can resolve this question on disposition of the properties to be conveyed to the Reeds. And if we're to point there, we close the public hearing. I don't want to start a time clock on the subdivision approval, you're going to face that if we do that. And then deal with the, you know, close the public hearing, adopt Jan's resolution, get that piece going, and then we'll deal with a resolution addressing the subdivision at a later meeting.
Okay.
We're fine with that.
You're fine. Mr. Hollis, is that, do you understand what we're proposing?
I've been doing this a long time, like-
Okay. I'm sure.
At least below average intelligence, yeah.
No, no, sometimes things happen quickly here, and I have trouble keeping up.
I believe you, I'm okay, but thank you for your concern. But my concern is that the restriction that you're trying to put on a simple subdivision to a merged lot, I think is excessive, to say the least.
Okay, you've made your point.
Okay, so we will, we will, I think, bring us a proposal. Let us-
The proposal's in front of you.
Okay.
And what you're, what you're trying to do, which is my point, repetition's the mother of learning, the nun used to say, and what I think, what you're trying to do is exact a restriction on a subdivision that I think is excessive and perhaps even impermissible.
Okay, so I think what we will, will do is, as Judd recommended, which is, we'll keep the public hearing open, we'll ask Jan to prepare a resolution that addresses the changes to the, to the farm operation, and we will continue this discussion at the next hearing.
And what date's that?
That is, I'm sorry, I should know this.
July 16th.
July 16th.
Thank you. So, I just have a question on this part of the-
Right, right.
Resolution part, is, have you looked at, I know that you have the planting plan for the wetland mitigation and everything around the, what's called the island, for better, for lack of a better word, which I think works well. Just, we had talked a lot about the removal of some of the larger specimen trees, and I understand the reason and where you look to try and save, so is there just an ability in some of, I think downhill of that, is some still open grass, which isn't part of the field, to try and incorporate a few more kind of shade or canopy trees for the future? Because I think you have maybe three trees right now, and two river birch, and maybe I'm off on the count, but just a couple trees in the wetland planting? So, just trying to see about getting a couple larger trees, possibly?
So, what you're, what you're talking about is within the mitigation planting area? So, you're talking about-
I, I mean, if you could, I don't know, like, wherever you think could possibly try and incorporate some larger, I mean, they don't have to specifically be massive caliber trees, but something of, some type of, it can be-
That could grow to be, that could grow to be bigger, yeah.
Maple, the things of our area, somewhere on the property to try and-
You're asking, sorry, you're asking about in the kind of open space green areas, you think that?
Yeah, not, not your-
Well, first of all, we want to keep as many trees as we can. I bought the property today, there's always beautiful big old trees, one, you know, one fell down last week, there was, that happens, we want to keep as many trees as we can. That's just part of the farm. So, if there's, and also, I can say, I can't say, oh, specifically we're going to build a big row here. I don't want to say something in the later meeting, I'm going to say something, we didn't, but I will say, on our property field, and our previous properties, we planted trees and things there to have kind of islands, so, we are, you know, there from where I'm standing, and as you said earlier, there's not many trees here, but like, there's always a lot of trees inside the boundary. I wouldn't say we'd happily eat as many trees as we can, if we can plant some trees, we love some more. I do see a number, perhaps they're going to do something, but we plant trees, like where we've had, so far, we've kept, and really be-
Okay.
Okay.
Got it. Charlene has a question, too.
Charlie, we keep calling this a riding academy, and it's other things, and why isn't, you specifically said it wasn't a riding academy?
No.
It was like a training academy.
No, what I said is, okay.
And Mr. Hollis actually sort of-
Right, if you go back to the earliest submission that we made-
Right.
We quoted from your code that the classification you put on this type of operation is a riding academy.
Why is it not a horse farm?
It's because if we, well, we're going to be training horses for other people. We're boarding for other people as well. So a horse farm is something different. It's out of your code. If you look, if you like.
No, no, I, I've seen it. My, my, can we have limiting language saying that it's a training facility rather than a riding academy? Because they're going to really, they're really quite different. And I, and I understand, I think that's great.
Is you saying it's quite different in a legal term or difference in what the operation is?
In operation also.
So I would say if we had to hold on to it, what our operation was, what we're doing.
Right.
So I totally understand the question. I appreciate the question. I would say if there's a better language that would.
Yes, that's all I'm saying.
For what our operation is.
Because Mr. Hollis has actually brought it up, how things can change. And, you know, if you have a riding academy and if there are limiting language, I think it would be.
Okay. But we've been providing a business plan.
See, that's a good thing. Because part of the process is we have to, we have to give you a horse management plan and a business plan, which, if you remember, the chairman asked that we make sure we put on double H letterhead, which we did. So you have all, everything you need for that. But what, but the, if that doesn't become a code term, the code term.
No, I, I understand. I'm turning this up, yes. Judd, would that be determinative if another operation went in there that was a riding academy?
Yeah, or, or the approval that we would issue would, would condition.
That, that's all I.
There you go.
That, that satisfies me. And also in the notice of intent, I think it's on question 20, you say that it's not an agricultural use.
Notice of intent, oh. I'm sorry, which document are you referring?
This is the, um, DEC notice of intent.
The NOI, yeah.
All right. We'll, we'll look at that. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up. Appreciate it.
Charlie, I also believe that you had indicated your acceptance of a condition that any change of ownership or increase in intensity would come back to the planning board.
That's something that we did discuss. I'll just confirm that with you. I want to speak to the clients about that. And I think, though, that's pretty much governed by the business plan. But I'll, I'll speak to the client and get back to you.
As long as, what would they want the future owners, if there are one, should have to comply with that or have to come back to the planning?
That would come and take over this riding facility, the 20 stalls? I understand. I'll talk to the client and get back to you. Thank you.
Okay. So I think that what we are doing is adjourning the public hearing till the.
July 16th.
July 16th meeting. And we have agreed consensus to direct Jan to prepare a resolution on the Phase One, the farm portion of the Phase One, farm riding academy portion of the Phase One. And we will have further discussion next month.
Phase One of the riding academy use.
May I ask a favor of, on July 16th, could that reconvening of the public hearing be at 8:00? I have a public hearing in Bedford at 6:30. It should be finished by 7:30 and be here by 8:00.
I think, especially because you, we've now announced it to everybody, I think that works. That would be fine.
Unless it's your partner.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think that's fine.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
And so members of the public, this public hearing will be reconvened next month. Okay. And the next item on our agenda is a wetland permit review. This is calendar number 16-24 WP, calendar number 10-24 SW. The Lake Atona Stormwater retrofit project on Upper Lakeshore Drive in Katona, New York. And, yes. Hi, Kevin.
Good evening, everyone. Kevin Fitzpatrick, Director of East of Wetmore Ship Corporation. This project is for addressing, excuse me, an existing municipal outfall, which is taking stormwater flows from the drainage area directly into Lake Atona currently. It's an existing easement, which is on the New Mover property. What we're proposing to do is install a series of bioinfiltration chambers leading down the hillside to treat water for releasing it into Lake Atona. To define that a little bit better, bioinfiltration, you can think of just as a series of rain gardens, essentially that'll come down the hillside and flow into the, to the lake. This is to address the municipality's required stormwater treatment for phosphorus reduction within near city DEP watershed. We are in receipt of Keller Sessions' review and memo, which came in, I believe, yesterday. Memo's comments are easily addressed. We've already been in conversation with the town supervisor regarding the project. All parties have signed off on it. We presented to the highway superintendent and took him through all the requirements that would come along with the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
So I think, just to clarify again for the record, you said there's an existing easement, and that is an easement to the town of Lewisboro?
Yes.
Okay. Jan, I know you have memo on this. You want to hit the highlights?
It's type two action under SECPRA. We're looking for you for a stormwater permit, wetland activity permit. Also require coverage under the DEC's general permit. The maintenance of the facility is going to be the town Lewisboro. So we ask for just written confirmation from the supervisor that is accepting of that and is aware of the maintenance provisions. Sounds like that's underway. We ask for any sort of easement documentation associated with the existing drainage easement. There's some work taking place outside of the drainage easement on 78 and 66 Upper Lakeshore Drive. These are restoration and staging areas. So we'd ask for indication that the property owners are agreeable to that. And we had some, you know, kind of technical comments on the process.
Maybe I'm going to leap ahead of the board here, but if the board said they wanted to have this go administrative, would that be okay with you? Okay. Board? What do you think? We have to make a motion?
I, I saw move.
Okay. To, to give this administrative.
I'll second it.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the site development plan review. This is calendar number 10-17 PB, calendar number 19-22 SW Mercedes-Benz of Golden's Bridge, 321 Main Street in Golden's Bridge. And it's an application for amended site development plan approval. Hello?
Good evening, man chair, board members, staff. My name is Anthony Nester with the firm of JMC, here on behalf of Silverdine Westchester Mill LLC in their application for amended site development plan approval.
Great.
Just here tonight, just to give you an update. So after our last meeting, we did appear before the ZBA, which I believe the ZBA, as far as I know, did not have any issues with any of the variances. And I thought they did vote in favor of all the variances and the updates to the plan that was submitted. We have provided the Golden's Bridge Fire Department a set of plans, which we have not to date heard any comments from. We are in receipt also in Mr. Johansson's latest comment memo, which we will address prior to the filing deadline for this mission for the next meeting. We are also, for procedural matter, again, I'm not an attorney, so please forgive any issues that I might have. But I do believe the board still needs to vote on their intent to be lead agent to complete the process. And just respectfully request that a public hearing be scheduled for the next meeting.
Okay. So my understanding, I think in talking with Kirsten, that the materials sent, were sent out on June 12th. And we need 30 days to hear back from everybody before we can declare ourselves to be the lead agency. So we, it's, 30 days haven't happened yet. So what we.
What was that date? Was it May 12th or June 12th?
June 12th, I think, is when the, because I, it sounds sort of convoluted, but I got one, so I had to sign it. So, yes. So I looked at the date. So we have, I think what we, one of the things that was in Jan's memo is refer to ACARC. Has this already been referred?
Yes, actually, sorry. We've also appeared before that board as well. I believe it was you who was.
Perfect.
Agreed upon that there were no issues.
Great. Okay. So I think our, our next step is really to ask Jan to prepare a NECDAC for this board to consider in July.
Well, you have to, in that, in that future meeting, you have to declare lead agency and issue the NECDAC. If the ZBA acted, they acted without the NECDAC.
Okay.
So they would have to re-vote on that.
So I would imagine the meeting is the day after. So I don't know if that's something we need to see, if we can get on the agenda for that with regards to that. If, is that something that can be administrated, done administratively?
No, you'll have, you think that the proper chain, my action here is that the next meeting would be lead agency and a NECDAC potentially.
Right.
The board's in favor. Then I think the ZBA meets after the planning board's July meeting. The ZBA meets after that. So you go to the ZBA, get a formal approval, perhaps, and then come back for some plan approval in August.
Yeah. So I think, you know, we're, we're assuming that the ZBA, since they've already sort of said, okay, but before they had, before we declared lead agency, so they have to redo it.
And the NECDAC.
And the NECDAC, I don't expect them to have any problems, but we, unfortunately, I think that's our process.
Am I remembering correctly? Villas at Vista went out June 12th. I don't know that I received packets for.
Did I do the wrong one? Did I say the wrong one?
I thought it was, it was.
I don't think I've seen a Villas. Am I confused?
It went out because we're still waiting.
Is that available, please, John? I'm waiting for, I contacted Drew for.
Well, she said you were waiting for, for the intent before the, I thought everything was done.
So no mailings or hand deliveries gone out? I'm receiving those.
Oh, really?
For, for the intent to be lead agent?
What?
This is Villas.
That's Villas?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have another, so even more of a delay then. We. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you for correcting me. I thought that was Mercedes-Benz, but it was Villas. So how do we get? How do we get this? They, they.
The notice is drafted.
The notice is drafted.
Yeah, typically the, you drafted the notice. You don't prove that the applicant would prepare the packages, get them to Kirsten per distribution.
Okay.
And. Wasn't that package delivered with the check and whatever else we needed to pay and fees?
So like John has an example from another half of campus. I mean, plans and the notice for all the interested and involved agencies posted where necessary, letting you can hand deliver about five or six of them. But I don't know that I've received. It should be with Mercedes, a giant stack.
Yeah.
I apologize. I was.
I had that reversed in my head too.
I had it completely reversed. So.
Drew knows. I'm expecting it.
Okay. So that needs to be done.
In order for the board to declare lead agency at the next meeting, in and at the NECDAC, you would have to get all the involved agencies.
Respond.
To respond. So you could do it quicker than 30 days if everybody responds. But you have the DEP and the DOT that you would have to strong arm to get a notice in. Which you might do.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, we usually wait 30 days just because not everybody responds and then you assume. But if you could get them to, if you can get them to respond, we could do this. I think we can still direct you to.
Definitely.
Prepare it. And then if we're able to act, but if not, it would have to wait again. Yes. So if you have any questions about exactly what you need to get to Kirsten, get in touch with her and she will let you know. But I think this is, and, and the goal would be to try to get all the responses back so that we could take action next, next month.
So if, if everything was in place and we were able to do that, is it something that the board would declare themselves to be lead agent and then at the same meeting open the public hearings now? Or, no, we can't because we have a ZBA.
No. Well, we could, could we open one and then hold it open? But that really doesn't.
The ZBA.
Yeah.
It's up to you whether.
I mean, we know that we won't have the ZBA response, so it really.
Did the board determine whether a public hearing was barred?
Oh, that's one of the things. Let's see. We could presumably decide that based on, you know, the, the changes being relatively, you know, less, less intrusive. We're, we're taking, I mean, so we could as a board, if we decide that we don't need a public hearing. Traditionally, we've had some very interested parties on this, but I'm, you know, I'm not sure that there's much that we would hear that's new. I'm sorry.
If you hold one, maybe you schedule it for August. But I'd get the NECDAC out of the way first.
Well, then I think maybe we can defer on that decision, you know, and we should think about it. Because whether, again, we've had, we've had a number of public hearings on this project already. This is unlikely to be, you know, I mean, if we were putting up a garage instead of getting rid of one, I would say maybe the public would need to talk, see. But we're really trying to lessen the impact. All right.
I was just, want to let you guys know too, so during the, the ZBA hearing where the neighbors did appear and they all spoke in favor, so I don't think there was anybody, from a neighbor's standpoint, with regards to any issues. And that includes all the neighbors.
Right. Okay. I think, let's get the, as Judd suggested, let's get the NECDAC, see if we can get that done first and then, and everything. And then we can decide whether or not we need to schedule. But I think, I think, kind of thinking through it, and, and with the information that you gave us about the ZBA, that, that's helpful to know. We can, we can consider, but I think.
Right. And I think, once you see the NECDAC and how it presents the modifications and it may inform or guide you in that decision as to whether to do that, whether to hold the public hearing or not.
Right. Okay. Okay. I am sorry, I was confused about the materials, but you try to get those things out quickly so we can.
Yeah.
We can keep moving this forward. Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next.
Just one comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Anthony, you, you got the, the memo?
I did. Okay. One, just one question on that, too, with regards to the DOT permit. That's going to be tough to get within, you know, if it has to get amended.
Yeah, that would be, automatically that's going to be a condition prior to work within the DOT, right? Why you don't need that.
I can't do that unless I get the memo.
Right. We'd like to hopefully get them to do the lead agency or get that notice back to us.
And I will make a call.
So it's really the sections. Can you get us those sections?
Yeah. I actually had them with me tonight and I was, I know the board hasn't had a chance to look at it, so I didn't want to.
Yeah, but the revised landscape looked good. I know you altered that.
Yeah, we did do that as well. And I do have the board here, but I think everything else will be addressed.
Yeah.
Yep.
And also with regards to the SWIP. So we have contacted the DEP. And we had a conversation with them. They've just asked for updated figures with regards to the areas. But they seem to be on board with everything as well.
Right, great.
That's good news. Okay. So, yeah. And you can get the, you can submit the, the sections and stuff into it.
Yeah, we'll have it all by the 25th, right? Which is.
Perfect. Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 09-24 PB, calendar 19-24 WP, calendar 12-24 SW. This is Villas at Vista, 920 Oak Ridge Commons, South Salem, New York. An application for construction of 12 housing units in building 9A B, four of which were previously approved.
Thanks for your honor application again tonight. Bob Ebert, Crystal of the Lomax, Jet Pines here instead of Phil tonight, so we can get the, get the change up. Of course, Andrew, because I just hear from Civil Engineers office. We really don't have a lot of changes in our submission this, this month. We're going through and addressing all the items on Jan's memo, and we'll have those for you next month. There is a zoning issue that I'd like to discuss tonight. It's rather minor, it'll just take a moment to review. But we had a Zoom call with Building Inspector Kevin and Jan, obviously, the design team and Phil. And we went through some of the portions of the section 220-26. Now, we're in a, we're in a. Now, we're in a, we're in a RB zone, but for multifamily, you have to conform with the multifamily portion of the, of the code, which is 220-26. So when you go through that, there's some things that, you know, we wanted to review and make sure that it was all clear. And I think we, we did that very well. And there was one thing, and this is what is causing a change in our submission, is that in section 225-1, which is the AFF section of the code, was in conflict with the section that called for the middle income. And thank goodness we had John who could clear that up for us. He correctly said that section of the code was kept in there after the, after the AFFH section was added, so that if there's anybody like Laurel Ridge who got units approved in, under that section, could continue to apply for that section. But new applicants like this would then go to the AFFH portion, which aligns with the county.
Right.
If you have that proposed number, another scenario where middle income could be used if you had a number of units lesser than, what was it, 10?
Yeah.
Because I think 10 units or more requires.
You're absolutely right.
The county. So if you had a smaller development and you wanted to do some middle income, you could do that too. Just to clarify.
Exactly. Exactly. But we do have, we have, are proposing 12 left.
Right.
So that is a total of 12 on the site.
Right.
And if you remember, when we got the four, it was committed, that would be included when we went to the low income this time. So in that section 225, 220, 25.1, thank you, there's a section D3, and this one surprised us as we reviewed it. It said that applicants have to match the number of bedrooms for the predominant, or may I try to say, we have to match the typical number of bedrooms in the rest of the development. So since all the other three, all, all the other units were three-bedroom units, we had shown these as two-bedroom units. So we had to make a change, increase it to three bedrooms. And when we did that, we had to increase the addition that we were making. So this addition extended out another 20 feet. Now, why did we have to do that? Bedrooms need egress windows from, you know, what was the warehouse building? We don't have too many windows. So we don't have that. So because of that, we have to put, put the bedrooms where the windows are, and that's why we had to expand it.
Okay.
So that's our explanation for that. The only other zoning issue that I'd like to discuss tonight is, there's a footnote in the RB zone about buildings with over 10,000 square foot footprint. It limits our footprint amount. Now, the existing building is already over 11,000. We have a variance on the, the front building, what we call building one and two. That was given a number of years back. That's 30,000 square feet. But this building was not granted a variance, so we don't know how it got to 11, but it is. Now we're expanding it to about 14,300 square feet. So because of that, we, you know, we feel we'll need a variance for that. Now, I don't want to take away anything from Kevin. He still has to give us a reading on that, but I think, I think it's pretty clear that we're going to have to go for variance for that.
Okay.
We, we had that conversation also during the Zoom meeting, and yet it sure appears that we're going to have to send them to the CBA for a modification on that.
For variance. Yeah.
And what I just heard, if I'm correct, is we can't, can't go to the CBA until you become lead agency, is that?
You can go, they just shouldn't ask.
They shouldn't vote on it, is that it?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So, but, and so it was yours that came out, that were mailed and/or had been delivered on June 12th. So, again, 30 days or, or get everybody back. So, yes, so, so let me just make sure that I've got it. The whole section on AFFH, the zoning thing, that's okay, but you are, you do anticipate getting a denial letter from the building inspector that will direct you to go for the square footage?
Yes, that's correct.
Given that, and I know we did, we, we do expect some more submissions on, I mean, we talked about landscaping and all that stuff. So what more can we do tonight? We could direct you to write a, the, well, I don't know. Can we direct you to write a, a resolution declaring us lead agent, but for next month? We haven't, we sort of, I don't know. Can we do that?
Do it.
We can do that. Neg deck, we need a little bit more.
I think you're close. There's probably some of the stormwater comments, maybe a couple of stormwater comments and you'll have to do your ship out coordination.
Right.
And, and some of the landscaping and stuff?
Yeah, probably. Yeah. We can go through which of our prior comments are secret related and you can please get that stuff in.
I think we've got most, most of it we'll have for you for the next mission, which is in a week.
Yeah. It's in a week, I know.
If you want to just go over the stormwater, maybe over the phone before you resubmit, just to make sure we're on the same page on some of the.
Sure. We have a.
So we can agree to ask for a resolution to declare ourselves lead agency? And I don't know if we're ready for neg deck. What do you think?
Well, you're definitely going to need the ship out. So they're going to have to make, if they haven't done that submission, they're going to have to submit the ship out and you're going to need to get a response. So I don't know where they're at.
Okay. Well, let's get, I mean, again, to just try to keep things moving. Let's get the, the lead agency. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll look at the stuff that you submit to us in a week.
Thank you. Appreciate the talk tonight.
Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda, just to announce to everybody, is calendar number 05-24 PB. This is 1156 Development LLC. And that, again, they asked to be adjourned until July. So the next item on our agenda is calendar number 08-24 PB. This is the Acme Market Expansion at Goldensbridge Village Center. And it's an application for a change of use from bank to grocery.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rob Cochrane. And I'm here just for the purpose here that Acme are representing the site owner and Acme is asking for a change of use of 3,000 square feet where the bank used to be.
Okay. So I think there were a couple of questions that were in the, or I'll let, just maybe ask Jan to go through the, the memo a little bit and.
So somewhat similar to the restaurant that we had on the docket a couple of months ago. It's a change of use going from a former bank to the grocery store. The grocery store has a higher parking demand. This will require an additional four parking spaces, which they're proposing with the land bank, similar to the restaurant. That's permissible under the code. It's type 2 action under SECPRA. They qualify for the waiver of site development plan procedures. The only questions we had really were, and I'm not sure if it still exists, it shows on the site plan, the, the former ATM on the end of the building.
Yeah.
Is that still there?
No.
That's been removed.
It's been removed.
It's been removed or it's been removed?
No, no. It's been removed. Why? Yes.
It's removed already?
Yes.
Okay. So that should be, the site plan should be revised to reflect that it's not there. So now it's shown as existing.
Showed that it is there?
On the plan, yeah. Still has it there. Yeah.
And then when I was speaking with Ed Delaney, the engineer for the project, he mentioned that because of the use, a grocery store operates, I think he said, under ag and markets and does not need to go to the health department for a change of use permit. So I just like that, I, you know, he knows the health department better probably than us. So I don't dispute that. I just would like confirmation if he could direct this to provision or just indicate, clarify that for us. Because he seemed to indicate that it did not need to go, which is entirely possible. So just a little bit more information on that, but other than that, we have a conference.
Okay. So.
If I may answer to that, the border health, there is no jurisdiction over that. It's a New York State, all the shopping, all markets, they are governed by New York State, what is it called? Agricultural market.
Right.
It's one of their laws.
Yeah, that's what Ed indicated, so.
Yeah. You know, if you can Google that, I'm sure that you can find something there.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to have a, yeah.
Or Ed could provide it to us. It'd be easier.
Yeah. He can, he can write it. Okay. So I think the directions on this is to write a resolution for July if we agree to ask Jan to do that. Okay. By consensus, so we've agreed on that. So we will, the only other thing is I think the north arrow was pointing west, so you might want to look at the plan on that. It's a little thing, but I might have misread it, but yes. Okay. So we'll, we'll see you next month.
Next month. Okay. What do we say, what do we have to do for next month?
Show up. No, you have to provide. Yeah, that plan has to have the.
ATM removed.
The part that has the ATM on it.
But the ATM, speaking of, after you mentioned that and said, yes, it's been removed, I think that there was only, no, there was a drive-through. The ATM was inside.
Yeah, but that drive-through associated with the bank, is it, that's what, maybe that's what's shown on the plan. Is it still there?
It shows a bump out.
It, it, it's been blacked out. That, that was, that was just a drive-through. It's no longer there. But the ATM was always inside in the locker.
But the structure on the south end of the building that's associated with the bank is not there no longer, correct? Whatever that drive-through.
No, no. It's been blacked out.
What do you mean blacked out? What do you, what do you mean by that?
The window's been removed.
So it's, there's still a bump out from the.
There is no bump out.
There's no bump out.
I thought it was like, it appeared on the site plan almost like a vestibule, like you would just have like a roof overhead and you would drive underneath the roof? Nope?
No.
But the, the site plan needs to get clarified because it's, there's a separate structure at the end of the building that's shown on the site plan.
Yeah.
Separate structure on the side of the building detached from the building yet?
Attached.
Attached to the building.
It looked like some sort of vestibule associated with the bank.
Not from my knowledge.
Okay. So take a look.
Yeah. So I think, yeah. Take a look and, and maybe if you have questions, call Jan and see if you can get that result.
I can verify it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. If there is any question, I mean, most times I'm there, you can.
You want to make sure that the, the site plan's accurate.
Yeah.
All right. So you want for next month, you, you want another site plan?
We want, well, it should reflect what you want to be there. If it, if the, if that thing has been, whatever, there, when you look at the site plan, there's a little, there's a little bump on the side, bump out on the side. So either that, if that's gone, it should be, or if you're planning to take it out, it should be off. If you're.
Is that the same thing that would be used in yours?
It's a more detailed plan, I think.
Yeah. What is?
You need, you got your glasses on?
I do.
There's a little bump out right there with an arrow, almost like a drive-through.
Yeah. Wow. Okay. Yeah. Right.
That's a small bump. It's bigger on the bigger piece.
It is. That's why you could see it, the width of the profile. Okay. So you want that on your, okay.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need that, if possible, by the 25th, next week. Could we get that by next week?
Yes. Well, that removed, I'm sure they can be done.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is really a discussion, is Vista Fire Department number one, 377 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York. We have a discussion about two separate things. So hi. Introduce yourself to the microphone.
Steve Woodstead, Chairman of Vista Fire District, Chairman, Board. Hello, Kirsten. As I hear, learn now, Building Inspector Kevin. So, yeah, so we're talking about the radio shed first.
Sure.
Right? So back in 2007 or '08, we had put a cell tower up in the, in the firehouse on the Vista. It's the fire district. It's not the fire department. It's a little different there. And we had put a antenna up for the communications. And at that time, we went back and forth with emergency services, getting our antennas up on the top of the tower. So we actually had agreement with the board at the time, which I believe was Rich Elrod. I think he was also.
I was on it. I remember that.
And went back and forth. We got, made sure that emergency services allowed up on there and the antennas were put up. They run the antenna wires down and to a proposed shed that was on the plan that we understand. And my understanding is that this was already approved to be done. However, during our whole process here, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we addressed you guys, okay, to make sure we're doing it correctly. And to get that shed up, the, we had, I wrote an email to you guys, I'm sure, I'm not sure if you guys all read it, but we are in a, in a crisis a little bit with this because what we call 60 control, our dispatch for our radio systems from Valhalla is stopping low-band radios in September, or they're to discontinue any kind of maintenance of it and possibly monitoring of it, going to ultra-high band. Our antennas that are up on the tower now are set up for that and we need to run that to a radio box, communication building. How, I don't know what you want to call this thing, but communications building is what I'm kind of understanding is what the terminology is for it.
Like the equipment shelter associated with it.
Yeah, that too. Yeah. Exactly.
So I think what you've just sort of told us, and I've confirmed with Jan, is that that is on the plans, so you don't really need to come to us. Kevin is the guy to see.
Got it. And I did pick up a building permit the last time I was here. And we, I've got the authority from the board from our last meeting to fill it out. Once we get that, the proper structure that we're going to get, we're going to get a pre-made structure and, and put it there. So, but I'll be in touch with you and go through the whole thing.
Right. So as long as it's, you know, because it's on the plans, within the defined area, everything, and, and Kevin will just make sure that gets through. So that one, I think, is done.
Yeah. So, and, yeah, I'm talking about the electrical service and stuff. That's a whole different animal. So let's talk about Beaver Pond.
Yeah.
Okay. So Beaver Pond 123, there is a dry hydrant that we draw out of the Beaver Pond with. It's been used several times, a major instance in our town here, right on the corner there to a couple of houses up. This hydrant was capable of doing 2,000 gallons a minute, and now it's down to something This hydrant was capable of doing 2,000 gallons a minute, and now it's down to something like almost 100 gallons a minute, because it gets all slimed up with the stuff. And after a little bit of research with it, it is literally 14 inches down from the surface, 14 inches up from the bottom. So we certainly need to, what we call hydro dredge, that area around that hydrant to get a deeper area for that, for cleaner water. Now, I've talked to Mr. Shilkey, who is the owner of that corner property, number 3 Beaver Pond. I have a meeting with him tomorrow night at 7:00 to walk the site and show him what we were proposing to have done. Make sure he's on board. So that's where we're headed. We already... We're trying to fast-track this. It's such a major hydrant, it's one of our few right on 123, because our nearest one would be off of Elmwood, down off of Leon Levy's house there, Shelby White's house.
Yeah, okay.
So with that said, we've already approved our finances for it. We have a contractor in line, ready to go. The season is here to get this done, and we're trying to get this moved in the right direction. And so we, again, want to make sure the board...
Right.
We don't need all of a sudden... Sorry, don't worry.
No.
So I show up, and I believe I'm trying to be forward with it and tell you what we... What our plan is. You may have questions or something, so...
Yeah, so you're going to put the stuff into a bag?
Yes.
And where... You don't know where that bag's going to go until you talk to Mr. Shilkey?
Yeah, we're talking on the corner of 123 and Beaver Pond. There's a big area there of grass and maybe some thicket that's there that we want to put it in to let it dry out.
Yeah.
And then haul it off-site.
The debris will go off-site, okay.
Yes. It's not going to go level there, it's going to be hauled away.
So I... This is a... I mean, it's a little tricky, because it's a New York State regulated wetland there. It's got... I think... I think what we need is a wetland application, get some of the, you know, the where it's going to go in writing and get some of this, but we would... Might be willing to do this administratively if we...
I'm okay with that.
If you have it go with Jan, so...
The only question is, is this hydrant maintenance, right? Because we have the ability to do hydrant maintenance.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's where it's kind of like, this kind of gray area.
Do you need the permit? Don't you need the permit?
Yeah, and it's just a...
I think you...
Figure that out, if you get a permit out.
Yeah, I think a wetland application permit would be... I mean, we can do it pretty quickly, I think, to let that... To get... Well, we can do it. Jan can do it. We're not doing a thing. But, I mean, I think that could go pretty quickly, but it... Because it's got this, you know, dredging is a... Sometimes it's small, but it can be, you know, it's... I would just feel more comfortable having you get a wetland application. I think we need to make it a motion to have it handled administratively, so...
I would move it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any discussion about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think... I think just to sort of say, and it helps me to know, the spoils are going to get transferred off-site, but I'm thinking there was a... One of those bags on the road to Richfield, and it was there for like a year and a half. So I think just... It would be really nice just to have... Make sure that we've got a wetland application and make this, you know, kind of, it's done right. So...
I think we talked about a few things that you can submit, just to document a little bit your proposal. Didn't sound like it was the entire lake was over by the hydrant.
It's just a hydrant. We're just maintaining our area around the hydrant so we can use it, because, you know, it's a critical infrastructure for us.
Right.
It just... It's down, you know?
Yeah, so what... When you say the area around, is that like a 10-foot circle?
I would say a 10-foot area around that area, just if... Because you probably know better than I do.
Make a big sum.
What it comes back... Right, exactly. Just to get it so that the... I don't know if there's much inflow and outflow of that particular pond. I think that it causes some issues with some algae or something in there. It's just the way it is, right?
Yeah.
So that's a... We can get below that, so we can get some...
And you're looking to do this right away, right?
Yeah.
Because it has to be during the wet season for a hydro... Because you're hydro dredging it?
You know, they're coming in with a pump.
Yeah, so it's going to be wet season, so quick is possible.
It's kind of wet all the time, yeah. But, yeah, we can get this, so... Okay. All right, so it's given to Jan.
Just touch base, I can give you the requirements of what needs to be submitted, which I think you can handle majority of it yourself.
I know a little bit of water.
A little bit of that water, so...
Yeah, that's another hat that you're wearing, not the fire hat. Okay.
Good. Thank you so much. And as far as you get the permit, do we get from...